There he is.
Sorry about that, everybody. My Zoom just crashed. It's actually the first time in virtual meetings that's happened to me. All right, so February seventeenth, Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. First on the agenda, we have no minutes to vote on tonight. First item on the agenda, Hadley Farms LLC. Review and discuss revised site plan submitted for proposed shul located within an existing single family dwelling. Said properties located forty-seven Hadley Farm Road in Highland Mills. And is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two-two-three, Block one, Lot sixteen dot two-two. All right, John, if you want to give us the thousand foot.
Good evening, everyone. John Queen from Langton Tully, applicants engineer. We were last before you back in October twenty twenty with a proposal to convert the existing single family dwelling at forty-seven Hadley Farm Road into a shul McPhoot facility. At that meeting, there were three major items that that we were talking about. One was access to the property. Second was water, and the third was sewer. Since that time, we've had conversations with numerous parties, specifically in terms of access. And that's really what I want to concentrate on tonight with the board. The parcel of land, as you know, is a Hadley Farm road, which is a private drive. However, there's an emergency access connection to, I'll say, Woodbury Villas, Woodbury Junction subdivision that ends at the roundabout there, and there's a little stub road that connects to Hadley Farm Road, but is cut off by a gate and/or, I'll say, large rocks. Our proposal would be to connect the existing single family homes driveway to that existing stub, I'll say, emergency access drive. So that the shul would be gaining its access from the Woodbury Junction, Woodbury Villas subdivision. When we spoke the last time, it was unclear who owned that piece, I'll say, of real estate from the proposed roads within the subdivision to Hadley Farm Road. And what we would have to do to potentially use that as our access. But since that time, the town of Woodbury owns that parcel. It's part of the open space parcel that surrounds the entire subdivision. We have had preliminary discussions with the town. At this time, the town is not overly, I'll say, happy or willing to entertain discussions of a possible connection of that access drive to the property. We are still in discussions with them going through the particulars of it. However, at this time, the town is not open to the actual connection. Furthermore, through Natalie's review comments, there was developers agreement that basically excluded those types of access. That whether it was for maintenance or anything else, but nothing further could be entered in through, I'll say, the Woodbury Villas subdivision. But we're still talking to the town about that, but that essentially leaves the applicant with really one other choice, and that would be to improve Hadley Farm Road from Rose Lawn Road up to the site. Make that a functioning full roadway, probably twenty-four, twenty-five foot in width, whereas now it's it's at most twelve foot wide. And accept the traffic coming to the proposed facility that route, which would mean anyone in the Woodbury Junction Villas subdivision would have to exit out of the subdivision. Go onto Dunderburg Road, take Dunderburg Road north to Edgewood, take Edgewood to Rose Lawn, and then Rose Lawn up to Hadley Farmer. That's where we are at the moment. We are still trying to go and see if we have a path for access directly from Woodbury Junction to the property. The applicant wants to really, he has to nail that down first. He doesn't want to really proceed with the site plan, any sort of detail until he knows how we're going to get this access, either Hadley Farm or through the subdivision. So that that's really where we are. We're just coming to do an update with the board with that. And if the board had any preference or comments on the type of connection or access that they would like to see at that location, it would really be helpful. The other two items were the water. The applicant is going to use the onsite well. He's going to pump test that for quality and quantity, satisfy the water requirements. And he's, the applicant is pursuing sewer connection to West, not West, but to Woodbury Villas. That is allowed through the town's parcel. So we would do this sewer connection, but not the water connection.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Before we go to the board, I think Rick, with the access part, maybe it's best you weigh in here first. A little out of order, but.
Sure. John, I think the real issue is with respect to access into WP three is really something the planning board can't even do. And the reason I say that is that, as you may recall, this was formed, the WP three subdivision was formed as a conservation overlay district. And as such, it was actually something that was formed at the time by the town, but now those powers are with the village. They decided the boundaries of the conservation overlay cluster district. And there are certain reasons for having it designed as an overlay and that it was supposed to be developed as a very unique situation, different from, according to the code, different from the ordinary subdivision, which therefore doesn't really allow the planning board to have any access way by anybody into that development. Because it's, it would essentially redraw the lines of the conservation cluster overlay district, which this planning board has no authority to do. It would have to be done through the Village Board of Trustees to actually, although there's no provision in the code for an actual expansion of a district. We would have to look into whether creation of the district could include an expansion of an existing district. But regardless, the only way to affect effectively expand that area to allow something else access into here would have to be done by the Village Board of Trustees. The planning board, in my opinion, has no authority to authorize such an effective expansion of the overlay district. It also brings it to other issues, even if it was expanded, is that then it sets up all sorts of issues, traffic issues with respect to shortcuts from in and out of WP three. It was very much planned and decided as a limited access, self-contained cluster subdivision. And to allow others to come in really would defeat the purpose for which it was created.
Is there, is there a possibility that the village board could extend it to this property?
I will tell you that the conservation cluster overlay district regulations, and you can look in the code. It describes a process by which the then-town, now-village, actually creates one. Now, it doesn't say create and/or expand. So there is some question there about whether or not the board could even expand it once it's created. And I think probably you would have to result in an interpretation by Gary as to whether or not, under the zoning code, the creation of the district could also include within that subset an expansion of the district. I'd have to look at it more carefully to see whether that exists and assist Gary in that regard as to whether or not there's some other context within the code that may, by analogy or otherwise, sort of infer that it could be expanded. But it's certainly not clear cut that they would even have the right to expand. But certainly, the planning board, which is the only thing that we're dealing with right now, does not have the power to alter those overlay district boundaries.
So in the best case scenario, it would be village board potentially doing whatever they would have to do with the overlay district.
Yes.
And we would still need to involve the town board in order to make the crossing over their property.
Right, and also overcome what Natalie had talked about with respect to the developers agreement. As far as restrictions and that developers agreement, I can't recall whether or not those restrictions were carried forth in the deeded language or not. So there's quite a bit to overcome in order to can even consider that access part. And like yourself, I had spent a good deal of time trying to figure out this access issue between the last meeting and this meeting.
Yeah, I think all signs are pointing to the applicant having to upgrade Hadley Farm Road. That's.
It seems to me that that's that's really the only clear path that you have at the present time.
Yes. Okay.
John, is Hadley Farm Road a private road right now?
Yes.
Yes.
So would it have to be brought up to village standards?
Yes. At least at minimum, at least at minimums for emergency access, you know, vehicular traffic. Right now, it's basically a one-lane, I call it glorified driveway.
I lived up there. I know that road. That's why I'm curious as to how it could be widened because it's so steep on both sides.
Well, there's a, there is a right of way that is associated with that. It's about fifty foot wide. So the road, we'd have to do a complete design of the road to widen that most likely to twenty-five foot in width to be able to carry two-way traffic.
And then would that be, would that be dedicated to the village or would remain a private road?
I believe it would remain private.
I know this is sewer easement or something that runs up, right? Or a water easement or something that runs up that road?
Yes, you have, I believe there are two water mains that run, no, two sewer mains that run up that road.
John, I haven't looked at it, but does your client have complete control of Hadley Farm as a private road?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
What about forty-eight?
Yeah, the private road is under one ownership from Rose Lawn to WP three.
Could you provide the deed for that so I can just take a look at it?
Sure. And they're, they're also the same, the same owners is the one that maintains their own plaza. Make sure that it's clear up and through WP three.
And that's, that's the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
So with that said, John, is it, I mean, is it worth anybody's time to go to the rest of the comments? Or I think you got a bigger issue right now, right?
Yeah, and that, this was perfect. This is exactly really what, what, what we needed after all the research that we've done. So, yeah, I don't, I think I went through the comments. Everything else, you know, is valid. If we get the access squared away, we will certainly address everything that's in both Natalie's memo and Jonathan's.
Okay.
Chris, I just, I just have one other question. So if you, if you do decide to try to approach the village, obviously, that's the easier access. I saw on the map that the gate would be moved down. So how does that affect forty-eight Hadley?
Yeah, that's something, we had a brief conversation with forty-eight, and it was one of Natalie's comments as well. We'll, we'll be relocating that gate so that that driveway doesn't lose his access. It'll be, it'll be on a curve, like a curvature, like a slant. So that he can still come up Hadley Farm and access his driveway.
Okay.
But there's no direct access through to WP three.
Okay. That's all.
Any, any other members of the boards or consultants for this application?
The only thing I won't take too much time on anything because I know the access was important here. And I appreciate John's comments on the water and using the onsite well. As far as the wastewater and the sewer connection, I still think that even if you pursue the Hadley Farm connection for access, you should review the easement restrictions for the open space area and provide them to counsel just so that we could flush out whether or not the sewer would actually be permitted to be built in that area as well.
Okay.
He would still have to go to the village board, right? Because they're out of, they're out of the sewer district?
They're actually in the sewer area, but out of the water area. So the boundaries aren't coterminous, but.
But we would, we would still have to go to the town board for the sewer connection.
Right.
Because.
You'd have to go to both. You'd have to go to the town board in order to try to effectuate the physical connections that you need. Legally, you'd be able to hook into the sewer district if you're in the sewer district, as Natalie says. So it's, you would have to go to the town, but that's not so much for connection to the sewer district, but whether or not you could access anything through their property.
Correct. It'd be the right, yes, to lay the pipe through the property.
Right.
And at some point, we'll need the sewer calculations. I know you're not going to be using water, but if you can fill out the sewer part of the form, so we can give it to the sewer superintendent to sign off on, that'd be great.
No problem.
All right. Anybody else for Hadley Farms? No? Okay, John, flip your folder over.
Put your other hat on.
Put your other hat on. Wow, Matt, you got off early. You got off, you got off easy tonight.
Wow. Well, it was a pleasure meeting you and seeing everybody else again. Thank you.
Take care, Max.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Avalon Review and Discuss Revised Site Plan and DOT status of proposed four-story, hundred-and-thirty-room hotel, twenty-four at ninety-four Turner Road in Central Valley. Said properties known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section two-two-six, Block one, Lot five, and six dot two. Couple of, let's see, you've joined us this evening. Do you want to introduce your team, John?
Sure. Good evening again. Everybody knows me. With us tonight is Paul Olivera, applicant from Avalon Systems, Kristi Adana, counsel from Silverberg and Zalantis, and Frank Filaccioto, hopefully I said it right, Frank, our traffic consultant from Creighton Manning Engineering. All here before you for the Avalon Hotel, the Avalon Project. Or it's probably all familiar with this. We've been around for a little while now. We've endured moratoriums and zoning changes and variances. So we're back with you. The last time we had come before the board and discussed items was quite a time ago when when we were trying to facilitate our traffic review through the DOT. We've had a couple of meetings with the DOT. We've had many correspondences back and forth. Frank has been really the spearhead of that, generating the traffic report, which, which we submitted to you. I know Frank and Phil have been going back and forth. Frank will fill you in on all the details of the traffic, and I really, I think the traffic is probably the elephant in the room, which we'd like to try to tackle tonight. We did submit a site plan that was, it's pretty much packing in a lot of detail now as we're, we're furthering along our design. If the board wants to get into that tonight, I can, but I think based on the comments that we received and and the overall layout of what's going on in the general area with the adjacent project, we wanted to try to concentrate really on traffic tonight. And if you want, I can share the screen and go over basically the general layout of the site plan as we have submitted it today. I'll let Frank go into the details of our discussions with Paul Phil Greeley and the DOT.
Okay. And just to preface what John said, I only directed our consultants tonight to review the traffic and access issues. Because like you said, that is the elephant in the room. So until that is squared away, I don't see any need to continue forward until we know how you're getting in and out of your site. And then you should have ability to share your screen now.
Okay. So generally, just to get everyone orientated, this is the, this is the simple drawing up here in, I'll say, in the left-hand corner, upper-left-hand corner, this is New York State Route thirty-two. Coming down this location here, this is Turner Road, heading towards the back end of Woodbury Commons. Here is the existing martial arts studio on the corner. And as you see, the proposal here is we've always had this, we've had our full access drive coming in across from Oakland Avenue, coming down, coming across, crossing Turner Road, and then coming into the proposed hotel building sits, sits right here. We have a loop arrangement around the building back out, and we have additional overflow parking over on the south side of the project site. Part of the improvements, I'll just be brief. Frank will go into the more detail, but we were proposing a full access driveway across from Oakland Avenue. This includes closure of the existing driveway for the martial arts studio, who would then obtain access from our proposed access drive at this location. So that would free up this location for an additional curb cut because we were closing an existing curb cut. Frank has done a study. We've checked site distances at this location. Everything meets or exceeds the necessary code requirements for that. We've, as you know, been in discussions with the building inspector about this road. He's now in onboard with this road, providing our direct access to the hotel. That's not changing. We're coming across the Turner and on to our side. This is basically the layout that we've had. We've cleaned it up. We've done a lot of detail work on this. You know, we now have lighting, landscaping, grading. We still have some more items to address stormwater management and details with the board through site plan, but that's generally the layout for the traffic. I will have Frank pretty much take over now, go over what discussions and situations that we've talked to with DOT and where we are up to with that.
Thanks, John. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, Frank Filaccioto with Creighton Manning Engineering. If I have been before this board, it has been quite a while. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with me, so I just wanted to give you a quick background. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New York State. I have approximately eighteen years of experience in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. And I was first brought into this project about a year ago, and I think what would help is if I give the board just a very brief history of the traffic situation with this project as it would help frame kind of where we are at the moment.
Do you want me to stop sharing? You want to put up your own?
Um, sure. You know what? I'll share my screen. That would help, John. Thanks.
Yep.
So I'm just going to have a Google Earth aerial up just so everyone can can, does everyone see my screen at this point?
Yep.
Great. So our involvement commenced at the beginning of, or towards the beginning of last year. The DOT, which has jurisdiction over New York State Route thirty-two, as you all know, had written a letter dated March third of two thousand twenty that weighed in on an earlier version of this site plan, and their comment at the time was twofold, that number one, they would not permit a new access point to thirty-two, and that due to the proposed other hotel nearby, that they would look at both together. So at that point, we performed a traffic study with the, with the mindset that we needed to educate DOT a little bit about our proposal. We needed to make them understand that we weren't just proposing a new driveway on thirty-two, that we were also closing an existing driveway that didn't align with any other intersection. And that with the closure of that and the creation of a new driveway aligned with Oakland and internal cross-axis, you could have a better scenario than they do today. So we performed a traffic study. We took into account the, the other hotel, obviously, that had been proposed, not knowing exactly where it stood. And we essentially moved forward with a plan that would work with and without the other hotel project. And that was this, this concept of the access road to Oakland Avenue and Route thirty-two. At this point in the project, we needed to ensure that there was a workable and viable plan that got traffic to and from the subject property at ninety-four Turner Road from, from thirty-two and two thirty-two in the most efficient and direct manner. So we, we proposed that access way, and we reached out to the DOT through the help of Mr. Greeley, who's on, who's on the Zoom call this evening, to get a meeting amongst village representatives, ourselves, our applicant, the adjacent hotel and their representatives, and the DOT. And we had that meeting in late August, and we had a discussion that involved a lot of different things, some of which related to our project in particular, others related to Turner Road and thirty-two. But at that point, DOT pretty much told us that we were going to need to really prove our point with respect to the access road. And they gave us a number of things that we needed to show them before they even consider a new access. So we went and expanded the traffic study per their requirements, did some additional analyses, and resubmitted a revised study in December. And that, that revised study looked at a few additional things, site distance. It looked at a left-turn lane warrant analysis, things that the DOT had specifically asked for at that meeting. We bundled that up, we resubmitted, and the DOT recommenced its review. And just this last January, last week in January, we received an email from DOT stating that they would entertain a right-in, right-out access point on Oakland Avenue, across from Oakland Avenue, rather. You could see the blue line as the access road. So they would, they would essentially allow rights in and rights out. At this, that's where we stand at the current point. We have not gone back to DOT at, yet, although we plan to. At this point, we, we really feel that as a, as its own project, standalone project at ninety-four Turner, that the access across from Oakland full axis is the most direct path of travel for the proposed hotel as it eliminates any traffic, not doesn't eliminate it, but it reduces any likelihood that incoming traffic and outgoing traffic would have to use Route thirty-two Turner Road. And we plan on having further conversations with the DOT about that. And of course, we're here tonight to get your input and your feedback on, on the situation and hopefully turn that all into a project that is workable for everybody. But understanding that there's a lot going on, we've worked with, with your traffic consultant, with the DOT, we have a lot more work to do. We are in receipt of the two review letters that just came through within the last week. Mazer Consulting's review letter and H two M's review letter. We have to go through all the comments. But I think at this point, what I wanted to do is, is kind of explain how we foresee traffic coming to and from this property. Given the location of Woodbury Commons and the major interstate connections and the key roadways, we think this is going to be a dominant southbound or southerly draw with the majority of traffic coming up north, making a right in and going to the hotel. And so the return trip is that return trip here heading back down. And without the certainty of anything happening at this location, our thinking or our thought process was if we can create a safe and efficient access point that aligns with Oakland, eliminate an existing turning, existing driveway that serves the success martial arts and create a shared driveway, well, we can ensure a viable plan for the hotel project with or without anything happening at thirty-two and Turner Road. Again, that might, that may not be where we end up, but that's our thinking now. We think it's a viable plan. Obviously, we need to prove our point to you and, and the DOT. But that's how we got to where we are today. We've done a lot of analyses. We've worked with DOT. Obviously, we have to respond to the comments from your traffic consultant and H two M. But I just wanted to explain kind of how we got to where we are and certainly ask any questions that you might have of me if I can, if I can delve into any, you know, one aspect of this in particular for you.
All right. Thank you, Frank, for the explanation. Before I go to the board, Phil, you want to go over your report?
Yes. Good evening. Philip Greeley, Mazer Consulting. So I think Frank has given a good synopsis of the history up to this point in time. I, I think in terms of the DOT, they've looked at both hotels, they've looked at them independently, but they've also looked at them together to a certain point. As we discussed at the last meeting, DOT was very specific as to the improvements that they wanted at Turner Road. in terms of the left turn lane to accommodate traffic coming from the north and the restrictions that they were going to place on the Marriott proposal, which is a date to this. In terms of, and I'll get into our review comments, but we had reviewed the report that Frank prepared December 18th, I think it was of 2020. We prepared a report February 11th with several, you know, technical comments. I'll get into a few of those. But I, I think in terms of the information that DOT has indicated up to this point in time. And I, and I understand Frank's position about a full movement access opposite Oakland Avenue that he showed on the plan. But if DOT is only going to allow a right turn in, right turn out, then we have to, you know, I think number one, we're going to have to have a follow-up discussion with DOT and both applicants. Now that DOT has digested all the information. If you remember, and as Frank pointed out, back in August or September, DOT was basically saying they weren't going to permit any access to Route 32. They've now agreed to a right turn in, right turn out, apparently based on the, the email. But they did not provide any other comments relative to any other requirements. Okay. So with that, I think, you know, one of the next steps would be after we, you know, get the board's input. I think we need to have another regroup meeting with DOT. I don't know whether they're going to have a more formal review letter with any other specific details. But if DOT only permits a right turn in, right turn out opposite Oakland, then the, you know, that handles the traffic coming from the south. If the intersection of Turner Road and 32 is improved as part of the Marriott Hotel and at their presentation last night, they had indicated that they were going to take on that improvement to develop the left turn lane, tee up the intersection, provide the pedestrian amenities, take care of the land transfers. So what that would do is we would now have a clean intersection at Turner Road. One of the issues that was addressed in both traffic reports that left turns, as we discussed at the last meeting, left turns during high traffic periods on 32 from any of the side roads that are not signalized is problematic. And, and that's, you know, was pointed out in both the Marriott study and in Frank's study. If, if his traffic was coming out opposite Oakland without a signal, that left turn movement heading back south towards Woodbury Common would be a level of service F in peak time periods. The volume from his project alone would not warrant a signal. And similarly, up at Marriott at the Turner Road and 32 intersection, the Marriott project alone wouldn't warrant a traffic signal. So right now, if DOT's position stands, right turn in, right turn out opposite Oakland, and that's all they're going to permit for this applicant and the closure of the martial arts driveway, then traffic would have to find another path to head back to the south. And that path might be, might have to be through Turner up to 32 at the realigned intersection and make a left turn at that intersection to head back south. So that's why I'm saying, I think the next step is to have a, a group meeting with DOT. They did not provide any detailed review. They, I think they've just provided the statement that they're going to only permit a right turn in, right turn out at this time. We don't know if that's their preference or that's what they are only going to allow or whether they would consider anything more similar to what Frank described as a full movement access opposite Oakland. Now, we had a brief follow-up discussion with one of the people at DOT. And, you know, all they confirmed was that the right turn in, right turn out, they didn't have any other specifics. And, and I think that's critical to know if, if that's all that's going to be permitted at that location. That will take care of the predominant movement coming from the south. It would serve the, the martial arts in that same fashion in terms of anyone coming from the south or returning to the north. However, it, it brings us back to, you know, the operation of the Turner Road intersection and, and where do we end up with a likelihood that even if it's not at this time in the future, if a signal was to be permitted, where all of these two hotels and whatever gets redeveloped in the martial arts building would have the ability to make left turns back on to Route 32 heading southbound. So I think we, you know, based on the review and presentation from Marriott, we've tackled the issue of traffic coming from the north, which is not the heavy direction for these two uses by the left turn lane provision that Marriott has proposed and DOT has conceptually accepted. But we need to tackle, how do we get traffic safely and efficiently heading back to the south? And as I indicated, you know, each of these projects independently, you know, did a warrant analysis. But one of our comments is that we want to see a combined signal warrant analysis of both hotels, the reoccupancy of the martial arts building to see that once the left turn lane is built at Turner Road, would that be a candidate for signalization? And that would be ability to handle the movements exiting from each of these uses. Now, we have a series of other comments about access and pedestrians and I think on John's site plan, there was also an overflow parking area on the west side of Turner Road or maybe employee lot. Yeah, that's going to be important to have a, a safe and defined pedestrian path if people park there and are crossing over to the hotel. So, you know, pedestrians are an issue. We did discuss last week and even with emergency services, the possibility of at least an emergency connection between the two hotel properties, whether it's, you know, built or at least an easement to provide that connection. And we also talked about the need for possibly having Turner Road widened from the reconstructed intersection with Route 32 down to the hotel driveways. And depending on what this final configuration from DOT in terms of exiting traffic, we would want that improvement incorporated or accommodated in terms of right of way availability for each of the projects. And then since the martial arts driveway would be closed under this scenario, the traffic study clearly has to account for the, the traffic from that and the reassignment of that. And just, you know, in, in terms of the traffic at Turner Road and the driveways to the martial arts. Today, the westerly or the northwesterly driveway is an exit driveway on to Turner Road. The driveway on the south side of the martial arts building is an entry driveway. When you start looking at all these traffic flows here, it would make sense for that to be reversed because we are now going to have turning movements, at least for Marriott, up at Turner Road. And the ability to come out of that driveway may be more difficult. And with the restriction on the closure of their existing driveway to 32, they would have to use the right turn in, right turn out driveway, which again, may add more traffic on to Turner. And that may result, as I said, in the need for a signal at Turner and 32 in addition to the widening. So, you know, there, there are some other technical details which, and coordination of traffic numbers and projections that Frank's study will have to be refined and coordinated with the PDE traffic study for Marriott. But really, the big issues are, you know, the level of service for traffic heading back south on 32 and, and the delays that are, would be occurred, occurred similar to what we have today in peak hours. And what likelihood there would be. And again, I think the two hotels were reviewed by DOT separately, but also in consideration of what the master plan might be here. So we need to circle back with them. There, there are several other comments about on this new roadway opposite Oakland. When that is built, we would like to see an easement to the adjacent mobile station so that if mobile ever comes back in the future, that it would give the ability to connect to this new roadway. The question on that roadway, will it be a dedicated roadway or will it be a private roadway? I don't know whether that determination has been made. So that's the connector from 32 over to Turner to the new hotel. I would think that it may, if it was private, whatever easements would have to be put in place because the martial arts would also have a connection to that roadway. So I, I think those are the main items that we need to tackle. And the next step after we get the input from the board tonight is maybe to have another reconvene meeting with DOT to determine if the right turn in, right turn out opposite Oakland is all that they will allow. And that will give us some insight as to what else can be done at Turner Road.
Thank you, Phil. I'm there is one, I mean, there are a number of issues that need to be worked out and addressed. But there is, there is another issue too, that there is a potential that the applicant for Marriott, while not this applicant, they need, still need to approach the village board about a potential easement and taking of Turner Road to make their whole scenario work. So while the DOT has approved the realignment or potential realignment of 32 and Turner Road, they still have to reach out to the village board and get the land in order to make that happen. So we've, I think there's a lot of balls in the air, not only with this application, but with the other applications as well. Because if the, you know, I don't know what the village board is going to do. That's up to them. But, you know, that could change the scenario if they don't allow the taking of the land for the teeing up or the widening of Turner Road either. Correct. I just want to put that out there because, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of faith in Turner Road and 32 getting teed up and widened. That's not, that's not a definite at this point, and that's not anything this board can, can do. And the other concern I'll have and let them, every, all the, all the other board members weigh in is I don't know how we're going to, how you can potentially enforce a right turn in and right turn out. Anybody that lives here knows. At any, on any given Sunday, people are trying to make the left side of, out of the mobile all the time. You know, and it's jamming up traffic, the southbound traffic between the hours four and six, four and seven. Even in COVID times, there's been times you, you wait five, five, six, seven minutes. And everybody correct me if I'm wrong, to try to make a left, if you're going to try to make a left across 32 to go, go back down. I mean, the traffic coming up off the roadway is heavy. Because remember, there's no exit between us and Newburgh. So anybody that's got to get off Mountainville, Washingtonville, corner, they all get off here and they drive up 32. So those commuters, those buses and it concerns me a great, a great deal, especially being in an unsignalized intersection. I know we can't control the signal. That's a state DOT thing, but I think and I think what the state only allows eight inch curbs. We, we couldn't make
Yeah, well, they, they allow mountable curbs.
Because we do have an intersection that's further down Turner Road coming out of the commons that was designed to prevent traffic from driving up it. But if you sit there on a busy weekend or
Still do it.
People still do it.
Yes.
So people even, I, we could probably put a gorilla with a sign that says no left turns. I don't know how we were ever going to stop people from trying to make a left out of this, out of this intersection.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that's consistent with, you know, what I was saying about somewhere in this section of roadway, I believe there should be a signalized intersection. And, and understanding the complexities dealing with the village board, which I believe the applicant, you know, after, on the Marriott after the last meeting, was going to make that a priority. And after we had the follow-up meeting with the emergency services groups, they were going to approach the village board so that they could get that squared up. Pardon the pun, squared up so that they could square up the intersection. But the likelihood of DOT allowing the signal to go in here for individual projects is probably low. But if you look at the combined traffic from the various projects, I think whether it be at Turner, I don't think DOT would allow it at Oakland because they don't, there is no turn lane there. And on, on a bigger picture scale, and, and I think we had a brief discussion about this when we were talking with the emergency service department. Is corporate drive still a private road? It was never dedicated? I think that was
That's correct. Yeah.
So, so, you know, so I believe somewhere in this stretch with this development to handle traffic heading back south, making that left turn, Chris, as you pointed out, already is problematic. And with all the different projects coming in or individually, these other driveways, and that's the predominant, both, both traffic studies indicate that the traffic flow will be predominantly coming from the south and returning to the south. So the real problem is the returning to the south movement. And the best way to accommodate that would be with a signal so that traffic would be given a chance to turn out of 32. Because we have a fairly long stretch here. You know, the last signal at the common, all the way up, you know, we, we have a long stretch before we get to the next traffic signal up at Thunderburg, I think is the next one. So in this stretch, I feel that a signal would be necessary somewhere in here if we can get the combined access points to function. So I, I think your order is correct. I think there has to be some input on whether the village will allow that land transfer up at Turner and 32. DOT is open to take the land from the hotel as part of the improvement. So DOT is, seems to be already onboard in terms of the Marriott land dedication to the state. But once that's determined, I think we want to go back to DOT. And maybe even in the interim, we could have a further discussion with DOT about the Oakland Avenue intersection. If they're only going to allow right turn in, right turn out, then we have to look at what the other scenarios are.
And I know there was talk, talk about corporate drive potentially, but one, it's private. And I believe Dennis had mentioned one of his last meetings before. He's in warmer weather with the rest of us right now. I don't believe corporate drive was fully built, built out. There was some, some items on corporate drive that I think he had a look or H1 was going to look into that would need to be finished before it could become any potential of a village road. I think there was some curves or some, I don't know. I don't remember.
Yeah, there were some, some shortcomings of, of the roadway in terms of the village standards or, or before the village could, could accept it.
Yeah. So I know there's some issues around using, I know, because that was a conversation too, corporate to Turner. But I know, again, that has its own challenges behind it as well. So what's the rest of the board's input thoughts? So what's the rest of the board's input, thoughts, suggestions?
I have a question to Phil. Phil, what the accident rate between Oakland and the mobile station, do we have any statistics on that? Because I understand there's been a number of accidents along the line with cars trying to turn into mobile or trying to pull out of there. Would that play a role in having a traffic light at Oakland?
Yes. So, so as part of the Creighton Manning study, they did do a full accident summary of all the, the last three or four, maybe even five years of all the accidents in that vicinity. And there are a lot of left turn accidents and some rear end accidents. And D O T did not comment specifically about that in their response. I believe unless Frank can correct me, their response thus far was just on their preference of a right turn in, right turn out. And I'm sure they took some of the accident issues into consideration. However, as, as I mentioned before, we would like to at least see an easement from mobile to this new roadway. So that if a new roadway was built opposite Oakland and D O T digested the accident data, I digested the fact that the martial arts would be adding traffic. And at some point, mobile will be back in front of the village to, to do something there. And then we could make mobile tie into this road. And then maybe Oakland, D O T would, would consider a signal at that location. But we don't know their full position. They've, they've only given a partial answer at this point to the submission from Avalon.
So I also noticed that Oakland Avenue, a lot of the mono Woodbury school buses exit out of there and also enter into there along with Larkin down further north there. Would that play any help in getting a traffic light there?
Yeah. So all of these factors together, I think would be something that D O T would weigh in on. The, the big thing would be the accident rates, okay? And, and clearly school bus traffic and patterns there. However, because there is no turn lane on thirty two, a left turn lane at that location, I think D O T may want more than just a signal to go in at that location. So I, I think, you know, they're going to have to weigh in on all those parameters. They definitely take into account the accident rates. The data was provided in the Creighton Manning report, but D O T has not commented on that unless Frank can, can add anything else that he's found from D O T.
No, Phil, that's correct. The, the D O T really just talked about the configuration of the driveway. Just one point of clarification on the accident analysis that we did. We really looked very tight to Oakland Avenue per D O T's request. We did not, we have the data for, excuse me, we have the data for, because when we submitted FOIL requests, we did ask for data for a larger area. But D O T's immediate request was look at Oakland and look at the accident history there at Oakland specifically. And the most common accident was, was rear end with five accidents over the three year period. There were a total of nine over the three year period, but that, I want to note, that does not include the mobile driveways.
Correct.
And so at Oakland right now, T intersection, it does not appear that there is a, a, a significant crash history. And maybe that is, again, D O T is mute on the issue, but perhaps they took that into consideration and by, and, and agreed to back down from the original stance of no access at all across from Oakland. So we were, we were pleased to see that because right turns, of course, don't have, don't have the safety concerns that left turns do. And again, I think what we're all trying to get our arms around is if it is if anyone runs into constraints up at Turner and thirty two with land donations and things of that nature. Then you have an issue that is unsolvable potentially for the instant application, which is this hotel. And so that's why we continue to go back, or at least we, we intend to continue to go back to D O T with at least a, a full access discussion here. And, and almost play the two in parallel because we don't want to be in a position where something at thirty two and Turner happens out of our control. And then we are left with a, a, a situation that is untenable for the development.
Understood. I, I, I think the, the in following up on Robert's question, okay, so two things. Number one, the accidents and, and maybe I, I saw the accidents that Marriott had put together in their report, but there were several accidents at the mobile station driveways
Sure.
and rear end and left turning accidents. If, if, if D O T were to permit a full access here, we still have the issue of left turn movements that the chairman talked about. So would this application be willing to put in a traffic signal if D O T approved it? That, that's going to become a discussion item. If D O T allows it to be a full four way intersection.
Yeah.
Um, Phil and Frank, I don't know if you guys know this, this, you don't travel it every day, but there's also been an ongoing problem in front of the mobile station with tractor trailers going down as well as southbound parking. You know, they
They park and they, they park in the shoulder and they block and they run in.
And they even go right up on the sidewalk if they're southbound and they're half in the road and half on the sidewalk. And I don't know, even since the no parking signs were put up in front of Dunkin Donuts and mobile, now they go up just past S M A and they park there. But it's still on thirty two and it creates a problem right by Turner Road. So I don't know how you, how you resolve that, but I don't know with track if, if there's a curb cut there and, and they're coming out opposite Oakland, that's going to be like a nightmare to, with people trying to go around them.
Yeah. So since, since the no parking signs were up, I, I don't know whether there's been any change. I haven't
Not really.
No change.
I, I would expect that. I, I haven't seen it since then, but yeah.
It's, it's, it's a very busy intersection or a very busy thoroughfare. And I don't know if it's going to take maybe a letter, letters from the village board, the town board, the police department, I mean, to say that if, if this project goes through, will they grant this type of access? A signal needs to go somewhere.
Correct.
Yeah, I think it's just going to take, it's going to make a bad situation even, even worse. I don't know. The answer is I don't have.
Well, I mean, this, this feedback is, is all very helpful. And I think this is what exactly the type of discussion that we wanted to have, given all the moving parts. And so we appreciate the candid feedback, that's for sure. It helps us frame our approach to D O T and, and continue moving forward.
This is Paul Olivera. If I could add, I'm, I'm happy to allow mobile station an easement. We just feel that traffic patterns, if it's right turn, right in and right out only, become very cumbersome and very confusing, especially for people coming out of mobile or the karate studio or out of our development. Again, as everybody stated, we don't know the Marriott's disposition. We just feel that using our access road for full access makes it clean for all the businesses in the area. That's all. Again, I don't know the, you know, the, the traffic aspect of it, but we just feel it's a lot cleaner using our road for both ingress and egress, you know, going, you know, full access.
I, if we're weighing in, I, I would rather see it right in, right out, and then the use of Turner, only because I've seen the speed, especially, you know, four, five, six o'clock at night, the speed of the traffic that's going northbound at that particular point. It's for somebody that's going to try to skirt skip across, you know, the northbound lane to get into the southbound lane, you're taking your life in your hands. That's just my feeling.
I, I, I think, you know, in terms of D O T is not going to allow two traffic signals to go in here, okay? And assuming that there would be a fairly quick response on the issue that the chairman brought up, that the village board input on whether or not they would give up the land. There, there's actually transfers both ways. There's some land that Marriott would be giving to the state. There'd be some land that possibly Marriott would get from the village. And then there would be some land that Marriott would have to give to the village. Because to widen Turner Road, which is one of our other recommendations, if, if in the future that was to be signalized, that all has to be hashed out. And I understand the concern of being dependent upon another project. But it sounded like, you know, based on their meeting two weeks ago, they were going to move fairly quickly in terms of going to the village board to get that issue resolved, that they were committed to build the left turn lane. And if that happens, that would be a candidate to, to put a signal in there. So I think I understand the position of wanting to put the signal in at Oakland. But without a turn lane in Oakland and the proximity of the other driveway, et cetera, it may be a little more problematic. It may work if, if Marriott did not, was not successful in getting that land to tee up there, the intersection. But that's, you know, I think something the board has to have a good comfort level on where D O T is going to land. And we don't have that yet.
Yeah, I feel like if, if Turner Road is going to become the main way out to make the lefts to go back on thirty two, it's going to have to widen. You can't leave Turner Road the way it is and have two projects of this size. Use it for left turns, left turns out, it just, it's just not going to work. And from, from a, a practical standpoint. I mean, I guess we have to see how that goes.
But just out of curiosity, does the karate studio have to give any kind of permission to change their access to driveway? If you're shutting off their, their driveway right now?
Yeah, Frank, maybe, has the, has the martial arts agreed to the closure of their access if you get the access to thirty two?
Uh, Phil, I, I believe so, but I'm, I'm just going to defer to Paul. I don't want to speak out of turn. Paul, the answer is yes, correct?
Yes, they have.
Now, Rick, that's something we're going to need in legalese, right? Not just a
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yes, but that's, that's something that I'm, I'm sure they've had discussions with them that that's what's going to happen. I don't think they would have gone down this far, this route with D O T, et cetera, if they didn't have a nod from Success Martial Arts that they're willing to shut off that access and use the access from Avalon. But it's, it's easily done by recorded easement and agreement that would go ahead and, and detail all of that. But that's really a minor point.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any, before we move on and you go over Natalie or any other comments for the applicant to fulfill or anything else we want to discuss about traffic movements here?
I, I have a question. Is there any, will there be any residences along Turner Road? I know that some of the property is being bought up, but is, is there a house or two still going to be there?
Further down.
I believe only down closer to Cosimo's would be the remaining homes.
And the one on the corner of Turner, right, at thirty two? Is that one house right across from the dugout?
The, the brick one, right?
Yeah.
No, it's, I think it's the Grimes house.
This one, right? That's be the next house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's just north of where Marriott's right turn in, right turn out driveways. That, that residents would remain there, but they're access to thirty two.
Okay.
Can I weigh in on one other thing? Is that unfortunately, this application has gone through sort of a tortured route so far. Having been included in the hotel overlay district, but then having to go to the process of Z B A interpretation that in fact, the access that they had satisfied the zoning restrictions of access onto state or county road. I think before people go way far down the road, no pun intended, with respect to this whole possibility of utilizing Turner Lane in some way in order to have the left turn out. There needs to be a determination that traffic coming from ho- from the hotel in order to go left has to go onto Turner Road and does not have a direct access onto Route thirty two. That's, that has not been decided yet. The decision of the planning board was based upon the premise that it was going to be a full access onto Route thirty two, and therefore it's satisfied the zoning code's restriction that access must be on a state or county road. To me, if it's the right turn in, right turn out, all left turns going south, which is going to be a majority of the exit traffic, is not exiting, does not have access onto Route thirty two. It is access onto Turner Road. But that's something that unfortunately needs to go to Gary for an interpretation and then see where it goes from there. But I, I don't want, and this is really for you know, Christine to Christie rather, to go ahead and and decide what to do and advise a client with respect to this. But to me, I'm trying to look further ahead and don't, and I don't want this issue to be overlooked.
So Rick, are you saying that if they have to use Turner Road to make a left turn, then it makes the variance or the interpretation null and void?
It doesn't make it null and void, but it, it potentially splits the effectiveness of that interpretation. I think if you read it, it was basically saying, yes, we believe that this process of cutting across Turner Road and having access, full access onto Route thirty two satisfies the code restriction for access onto State or County Road.
Okay.
I don't know whether or not, let's say ninety percent of the traffic exiting the hotel now has to exit onto Turner Road in order to get to Route thirty two. I don't know that that is going to be considered, and I'm not giving an opinion that it is or isn't, but I think it's an issue that shouldn't wait until the end of this process and then just delay it further because that issue hadn't been addressed sooner.
And this is Christie Adana. If I could just speak to that briefly. Thank you, Rick. That's obviously a very important comment and something that we always have in the back of our minds during this process, especially given where we came from. I, I, we will have to go back and look closely at the zoning board decision. Just a couple of things to keep in mind though is that I, I don't recall it saying anywhere, full access, of course, at the time the plan was contemplating that that would be the direct means of access. But the code, the way it's worded, does not require quote unquote direct access, access, but the ability to directly access. And so I think our position would be that as long as that driveway is going to be created and access it be a right turn, right in, right out is going to be pursued as we're currently discussing it, that that would still satisfy the requirements of the code. But I understand that that's something that's somewhat beyond this discussion for this evening.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that it couldn't be that way. Personally, I had thought that your configuration from the beginning satisfied it, but I was not correct because Gary interpreted it differently. All I'm saying is that there's no sense in backing yourself into that situation late in the game. And then having many months of potentially an adverse interpretation by Gary that would then have to go back to the Z B A. I would just, I'm just suggesting that, that be pursued now so that you know the sort of lay of the land on that.
And, and we agree, and we are kind of in this. And, and we agree, and we, we are kind of in this, um, tenuous position of uh, what comes first, because, you know, we come to this board and, and we're very appreciative for the, appreciative, excuse me, for the input tonight. As Frank already said, um, but we're just trying to kind of get a handle on what our next step is going forward. And so, um, after hearing the conversation tonight, I think that is certainly something that we are going to have to look at as we start pursuing um, the other potential options with DOT going forward.
That's all I wanted to do, is just raise the issue.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, hey, Rick, uh, you, you brought up a point that, uh, i- if you recall, and, and not to, to digress on to the other application, the Marriott application, uh, that was discussed last week, but the DOT's position on that application, that their driveway, their direct driveway to Route thirty-two, uh, is supposed to be a right turn in, right turn out. And left turns to that hotel would be left turn onto Turner and left turn into the driveway. And exiting traffic would go onto Turner. So I, I don't know whether, you know, the, the point that you raised also now raises a similar issue with the Marriott, uh, application. We did not discuss that last week, but I think it, it may be something that we want to, if, if, if there has to be an interpretation, that the interpretation gets addressed for both applications.
Yeah, well, uh, the, the way it works unfortunately is that each one would have to apply to get their own interpretation.
Understood.
They wanted to have some kind of very unusual joint application, but the, I didn't raise it at that time.
Yes.
Um, because, partly because there's still such a big question in my mind that the village board is even going to allow this whole Turner Road um, improvement project of the, the village giving up certain land, um, to the applicant and um, allowing Turner Road to be improved. Uh, but if in fact it looks like the village is going to get past that initial hurdle, then I would say that that, uh, and the access, part of their access is going to be not directly onto thirty-two, then the same issue to me.
Understood.
Why? And, and I'm not saying that it, it won't be interpreted ultimately that, that's adequate under the code. I'm just saying that this board can't decide that because I don't think that's a, an issue that can be plainly read.
Understood.
It has to go and, and potentially get an advisory opinion from Gary and then proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Rick, Phil. All right, anything else on traffic for the applicant? Any other feedback we wanna give, uh, right now?
The, my only other comment is, uh, for Frank, uh, for Creighton Manning to coordinate, uh, with the traffic engineer for Marriott. Uh, there were some minor discrepancies, just, you know, get together and make sure everything is consistent, uh, so that we don't run into any issues with DOT, and I, I don't think it's gonna change any of the conclusions or results, but just coordinate that so, um, everything is consistent.
Yeah, there was some trip counts and
Yes.
turn movements and stuff that didn't jive between the two.
Correct.
Traffic.
Happy to clean that up.
And we can talk directly, yeah, we just, we'll coordinate that.
Yep, we're happy to do that.
Hey, Chris, uh, yeah, this is Rich, um, if it's right in and right out only, and we have two hotels, I mean, if people were smart, wouldn't they go to Corporate Drive and make a left? And that'd be another potential problem?
Well, yeah, they come down, I, I see, oh, they come out, make a left on Turner, go to Corporate and go, yeah.
Yeah. I mean,
Yeah, Ri- Richard, I think your, your point is, is exactly what I was saying is along this stretch, whether it be at Turner, opposite Oakland, or Corporate Drive, if Corporate was a, a village, uh, a dedicated street, somewhere in that stretch, there needs to be a traffic signal. And wherever that traffic signal goes, it would give the opportunity for any of the other uses, whether it be the office building. If we have the easement and eventual connection to mobile, it would allow any of those uses to proceed to that location. So again, that's, that was, you know, really where my comment is. Somewhere in this stretch, I believe there should be a signal. Uh, we need some further direction from DOT. Uh, if Corporate Drive was a, was not a private road, uh, then maybe that is the location.
And it's, I, I think what we, we, what we've hammered out tonight is that site access is still an issue here. Um, it is a very large issue still. That needs to be worked out. We still need to get DOT to finally give us their determination of what will or will not be allowed, um, before, before this board can probably really say yea or nay, they think the tr- the, the traffic flow is gonna work here. Um, I know, and I know it's, it's like we're trying to kick the can down the street, but yeah, we're not really, we, there's not much that I don't think th- this board can do right now until we know what DOT says.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think it'll be premature to review any other part of the application until, you know, we know what's going on and what they have to say.
Great.
You know, if you, Phil, or you can, if you wanna work with Frank, um, to get that follow-up meeting with the DOT, like we did back in Au- what we did back in August, um, you know, kinda help move the process along, that'd be appreciative.
Okay.
Um, 'cause I really think that's where we need to go next.
Yes.
Unless someone else thinks, got a better idea?
And Chris, does the ES do, does anyone from the ESO attend those meetings or no?
No, but we'll give them, uh, you know what? Thank you, you just reminded, I had a note. Natalie, I think, um, the chief sent over an updated turning radius diagram.
Yes, he did, yeah, for the fire truck that they're looking to purchase. Um, I can share that with this applicant if you'd like.
Yeah, let's, let's get that with them. Also, I think while it's still early, I think it would be who, um, let's see, we can schedule the ESO also here. Um, 'cause I know there were a number of issues they can, they raised with the other applicant, um, about traffic flow and islands and multiple curbs and all that other fun stuff here. So we're probably gonna have the same comments.
Do you wanna schedule that now, Chris, or should we wait to see how this evolves with the DOT? Uh, it's up to you. I just wasn't sure, um, if there's a, a fine plan yet with them.
Yeah, I, maybe it's best to wait because the, the Marriott is kind of in a permitting process already.
Right.
We're not, we're not there yet. So, yeah, I think it's, you're right. I think it's probably better that we wait.
If, if I could, uh, Mister Chairman, could we, could we have the ESO review the site plan that we have now so I can get some of the internal circulation, get them to take a look at it?
Well, that's why I want them to, that's why I want Natalie to forward over the new radius for the, the ladder truck they're looking at. Just, um, and that will, that's gonna really drive, um, them right here. So we'll give that to them, and we can get some initial feedback from them, but I think a formal meeting we should hold off on right now.
John, we could also share with you the comments that were received on the other application, 'cause some of them will apply to yours, so it, it may be who you'd at least see those and, and work some of those in, including the new radius for their new truck that they're looking at.
Yeah, that would, that'd be great. Thanks, Phil.
All right. I think we beat traffic up, but
Yeah.
Hey, usually you're not the star of the show. Past, past couple of times, you've been the star of the show. Um, anybody else from the board have comments on traffic or input they wanna give this applicant before we go to Natalie? Okay, you're up.
Thank you again. I'll stop sharing so others can. Thank you again.
Yeah, so I guess, um, in general, I mean, Phil's comments on this application are really paramount, paramount to how this is gonna proceed. Um, our memo, uh, addresses some issues that Phil already discussed, and, uh, I think all of them will kinda come in time. The only thing I will say, uh, is our comments related to Seeker and the EAF. I know, uh, when that time comes, um, if John, if you would review those comments and make adjustments to the EAF for further consideration for the part two, that eventually will be prepared. Um, again, that's not till your next appearance, I assume. Um, the other thing that I wanted to just mention, uh, had to do with the GML referral. I don't think it's been sent on this application. I'm not sure if it's an appropriate time to do yet.
Um, it has, it was referred earlier.
Oh, was it? Okay.
But I believe because it, the project has changed, um, we asked that it be re-refered, and I think Maria might have re-refered it today or yesterday.
Okay.
But we can check with that. And on the seeker, just to piggyback on what Natalie was saying, uh, the one step that you can take this evening, uh, Mister Chairman, and that is to assume lead agency. Um, you declared your intent a, a while back, back, uh,
Yeah.
It was a long time ago.
Twenty nineteen.
But it's, so I think that you can assume lead agency, which also would get you closer to then taking seeker steps, such as what Natalie was talking about with respect to the EAF part two.
So I'll make the motion that this board declares itself lead agency for the project.
A second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor? So I would hold off on the EAF though, right, Rick, for now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Um, I'm sorry, Natalie, we cut you off.
No, I, I really don't have anything further at this time. I think, um, like we said, the, our memo has some other comments that the applicant can address in the future and, um, you know, did not reiterate what everybody else said, but they have been in a hard spot, I think, with, uh, the original, uh, you know, DOT opinion and confliction with the ZBA, so, um, you know, we'll see how that all flushes out and, you know, good luck.
Rick, anything else from you?
No, I have nothing further.
Anything else from the applicant today?
At this time, I think, um, the feedback we got was perfect, and we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep at this, uh, traffic till we get it solved.
All right. So John, you're good with one, both applications and where you gotta go. And Phil, you'll work with Frank, uh, and DOT about getting that meeting
Yes.
set up. Okay. All right, well, with that, if there's, if anybody else wants to hang out for another hour or two, I'll offer a motion to close.
Make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi, hi.
All right.
Good night everyone. Thank you.
Great.
Good night.
Good night to everybody.
Thanks very much. Good night.